Who's here for the? Very good. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to welcome you all to the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting today and appreciate you all being here. It's not normal that we have such a full house, but thank you all for being here. As we start our meeting today, we're honored to have our invocation by Rabbi Helen Einbinder. Einbinder, am I getting closer?
First name?
Oh. We've known each other for years and yet I continue to flub up your name every time, but we do appreciate you being here to give us our invocation, after which our pledge of allegiance will be given by Brandy Frank.
Yes, once again, thank you on behalf of the St. George Interfaith Council for allowing us this beautiful opportunity of diversity of prayer here at commissioners.
And I'm Rabbi Lee Einbinder. It's French and Romanian. And I'm from Bay Harbor Re, the Jewish community of greater science. And I thank you for all the work you do on the head of this country. God of holiness, we hear your message, justice, justice you shall pursue. God of freedom, we hear your charge, proclaim liberty throughout the land. Inspire us through your teachings and commandments to love and uphold our precious democracy. Let every citizen take responsibility for the rights and freedoms we cherish. Let each of us be an advocate for justice, an activist for liberty, a defender of dignity. And let us champion the values that make our nation a haven for the persecuted, a beacon of hope among the nations. May our actions reflect compassion for all people within our borders and abroad. May our leaders and officials embody the vision of our founders to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. We pray for courage and conscience as we aim to support our country's highest values and aspirations. The hard one rights that define us as a people, there's a responsibilities that they entail. We pray for all who serve our country with selfless devotion in peace and in war, from fields of battle to clinics and classrooms, from government to grassroots. All those who noble deeds and sacrifice benefit our nation and our world. We are grateful for the rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness that our founders ascribe to you, our Creator. We pray for their wisdom and moral strength that we may be guardians of these rights for ourselves and for the sake of all people now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much.
It was funny, this rabbit cap doesn't fit me and it's the biggest one they had, so. But my name is Brady Frank. I work with the Marine Corps League as an associate member and for the, for St. George in Southern Utah. And we're essentially a veteran service organization that helps Marines and other veterans after they get out of the service. And here's the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. As we begin our meeting today, our first item is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting the consideration of routine matters. If a commissioner requests that items be removed from the consent agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than request to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda is non-debatable. And I do have here that item F is to be tabled. So whoever makes that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as follows. A, consideration of auditor approved claims for payment for July 6, 2022 through July 19, 2022. B, consideration of regular commission meeting minutes of July 5, 2022, and special commission meeting minutes of July 12, 2022. C, consideration of administrative adjustments for real property. D, consideration of adjustments, administrative adjustments for personal property. E, consideration of applications for property tax abatement, which there are three. F, consideration of agreement between the Attorney General's Office and Washington County for reimbursement for services provided by the Children's Justice Court. That's the one we're going to table. And then G, acknowledgement of publication of notice of adoption for ordinance number 2022-1211-0 on Sunday, July 10, 2022. That's my motion.
I second that motion with the consideration of tabling item F.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. The motion passes. Thank you. Ron, we're now on to our regular agenda items. Our first is a presentation for employee suggestions. And a while back, we've always encouraged our employees to give us suggestions, so we kind of started a program. And maybe I'll turn a little bit of time over to Nicole Felschaw just to talk about this, this program and how we have somebody here we'd like to recognize.
You bet. So at the end of last year, the commissioners put together a suggestion, employee suggestion box. And we really are trying to encourage all employees to really look at cost savings throughout the county in ways that we can continually save and be budget conscious. So keeping that in mind, we're looking at our first one today that will be brought before you that a deputy put out a suggestion. It was implemented. I hope he gets to talk to us today to explain what was suggested, how it was implemented, and the cost savings to the county. And with that, anything that is implemented actually comes before the commission during a commission meeting. And we encourage it by giving a $50 check to anything that we've implemented that has substantial cost savings.
So do we have Deputy Spencer Dobson here?
I believe so, yes.
All right. Don't want to put him on the spot, but.
I think he knew.
Yes, please.
So can you go to the microphone? That'd be great.
Just maybe.
You can speak to it.
Okay, so Nicole, I'll just reiterate. So trying to find ways to streamline, reduce costs. So Sergeant Dobson is overscheduling. You guys are aware of our community corrections building. It's a detachment from our main facility. So we had full-time staff assigned specifically to that building. Rather than doing that, the suggestion was that we just make them part of the housing corrections deputies. So we can rotate deputies out to that CC building. More, better, well-rounded deputies, and it makes it a little bit easier for scheduling for backfilling spots. So we thought it would, it was a good example of finding a way to be more efficient.
Thank you. Well, if it's okay, we'll just do a quick.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should change that to $50 or 10 gallons of gas, which ever is greater.
Yeah, way cheaper. Our next item is our emergency service report. Our Sheriff Nate Brooksby, we appreciate you being here.
Thanks for having me. So this is from June 20 to July 18, total of 10 search and rescues. That puts us at 73 for the year, so I think we're right on track for what we've been the last few years, with the exception of 2020, we went through the roof. So we break it down. So we had five of those were in-county residents, two were out of county, four were out of the state of Utah, and one international. We had a injured hiker at Brown's Trail at Pine Valley, stranded hikers at Red Mountain, mountain bike crash at Bearclaw Poppy. We get those on a weekly basis, it seems. Lost hiker in Colob. This one turned out into an arrest. So we had a victim that we saved, but then drugs fell out of his pocket when he got to IC. But he took him to jail, so.
That's a bad day.
Good day and a bad day.
Is that frowned upon, Sheriff?
Yeah, sorry.
That's frowned upon, carrying drugs while being rescued?
Yeah, just don't let them fall out of your pocket. So injured hiker at Tokerville Falls, you know that road's really rough. So with DPS having their chopper down here, we've already utilized them twice. This is one of those where they were able to go and get the victim out and out to ground transport to be checked. Hiker in Babylon, obviously, a lot of these were dealing with dehydration with the heat. I think it was 115 in my truck out there. Missing person out at Sand Mountain, that's another one we used DPS helicopter. Another one at Brown's Trail in Pine Valley, Scout Trail in Snow Canyon. And that's just kind of a summary of the callouts. We are preparing for our September Sheriff's Conference at Sand Hollow. They've got 30 new full hookup RV spots that they're going to let us utilize for all the volunteers that come in from all around the state, from sheriff's offices, from, you know, Cache County, Utah County, Salt Lake County. We get a lot of people coming down to help and support us. Same for the Ironman in October. We're already having monthly meetings in preparation for that. We already have additional help coming in from other counties as well, so that sums it up.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thanks so much. Our next item is a consideration of our purchase request. Ray Boyer?
Good to see you.
Okay. The first one I have here is for tourism. This is for promotional items in the amount of $10,500. Next one is for the Dixie Center. This is for, it's a replacement part for an HVAC repair. It's for a, oh, sorry, I didn't write it down. It's a VFD controller for an air handler. That's part of the, how the air flows through the building. And that's for $10,801. I did find out it was cheaper to repair this than buy a new one. This next one is for our GIS department. This is a large format color plotter. This is, it's basically a big printer for maps. It's $14,995. And the final one is for the Rose Department. This requisition replaces one you approved last commission meeting that was for $57,000 something. The total came out to be a little bit more, so we scrapped that one, and this one is for $122,785. This is to, this is overlay for rut and damaged areas on the Colob Terrace Road.
Very good.
And unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Are there any questions, commissioners?
I can just say that the GPIS printer they have, they have limped along for how many years, Ron? And yeah, it's, it still does a good job, but this is a vast improvement.
Well, I like the other, so you're saying that this last one replaces the $50,000 one?
Yes, yes.
I mean, the road is greatly improved.
50,000 is included in this $122,000, yes.
Chair, I move that we approve the purchase request as explained by Ray.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the purchase request. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Our next item, thank you, Ray. Our next item is consideration of canvas of June 28, 2022, primary election recount. Our county clerk, Susan Lewis, Melanie Appelinapp. What's Melanie's title? It should be like special election guru.
Election supervisor.
Yes, that's great, so.
So I'm back here today. It feels like it's been a really long week since we canvassed last. First, I want to tell my staff that I very much appreciate their help and support in doing this recount. Because I live in District 72 and I voted in this election, I felt that it was important that I recuse myself from the recount. There's also several of my staff that live in that area, in Hurcania, so they, we all kept our hands off the ballots. Instead, we relied on the people who live in St. George and Santa Clara. We had some people help us from GIS downstairs, professor's office. Around the county, people came to help us to make sure that this recount happened. Let's see. So what they did is they spent a few days rerunning each of the ballots, batches of ballots that we did from the primary election. Now, I need to explain that in Washington County, we've never had a recount in a primary election. We have never had a recount in a general election. So we have never sorted the ballots as they came in by house district. So when we got a request for a recount for District 72, we needed to not just recount District 72, we had to recount the whole election. Meaning we looked at, again, at every ballot needed to be rerun. All of the envelopes needed to be re-looked at, all of the provisional ballots, all the, everything. You start and do the whole thing over again. So I was asked why you can't sort, and I'm sorry, we would have had to plan that prior to starting the election to be able to have a process in place. Again, I'm sorry, I couldn't foresee that that was going to happen. But we would have had to have a process in place and procedures to sort. We have 138 precincts, so it's a little, not something you can do by hand, but again, we would have had to do it by, or we processed any ballots. Not at the end, when we found out that we had a problem.
So Susan, one thing that I didn't know about that is, as the ballots come in, you batch them in 50s, right?
Correct.
And it's kind of like putting them inside of a file folder because they kind of have to stay together under state code for storage and otherwise. So you can't start taking ballots out of those packets once you've put them there.
Yep, absolutely. In fact, across the nation, you've seen that people do elections clear over here and over here. We feel like Utah has been awesome because the legislature has sent us down a very direct pathway, which includes many state election laws, including the fact that the ballots have to remain steamed. You know, we can't be pulling things out like you're saying. We have to keep them together as a unit. They have to be stored and retained. There's specific laws regarding those kind of things. So as we started to do the recount, we went, what, what principles do we need to keep in place or put in place for the recount? As I spoke a little bit about first, we wanted it to be fair and impartial, which again is why we recused ourselves. We look at the processes that we have. We've found that many times people don't choose or can't be as impartial as a piece of equipment that just mark, reads a mark. We felt that to be very impartial. The next thing we wanted to do is make sure that we were accurate. We have had experience with, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but people make mistakes, errors happen. A lot more human errors than we've had equipment malfunctions or equipment errors. The scanners we have is just a large Scantron machine that reads the colored oval from each of the ballots. So we felt like to be accurate, we really needed to continue to use the equipment we'd used, and we wanted to have transparency in the process. So we invited people to come in and view the process. After all the ballots were ran and counted, then we had an audit yesterday. As part of the audit, we take actual paper ballot and we hold it up to the screen that shows you how that ballot has already been counted by putting little blue bubbles over what was counted. And so you can go through and look exactly at how it was handled, each ballot.
So Susan, as you count ballots, the machine takes a picture, an image of the ballot.
You bet.
And so that was what you were comparing yesterday. You were looking at the image that the, that had been recorded and how the machine had recorded the ballot compared to how the physical ballot looked, right?
Correct. Thank you. Thank you for that. I, I see how things are running. I don't always explain it well for somebody who doesn't see how it was run, so thank you. Okay, so we did invite the public in to watch us do that audit, and we actually got some suggestions. That we're, see if we can help and implement, consider what it is that they wanted to see in addition to what they saw at the ballot canvas. So, I mean, at the ballot audit. So today, we're here to canvas. And the House District 72 race, as part of the recount procedure and process, we re-looked, like I said, at everything. As we re-looked at the signatures that were found to be deficient, the ones that we didn't think matched, we looked at all those envelopes again and found a couple that we felt like probably should have been counted in the original ballot count. So they have been added to the recount. We also reviewed, let's see, the envelope. So as envelopes keep coming in after the election, we have to look at each of them to make sure that they don't have an appropriate date that they should have been, yes, a clear postmark that shows the date that, that they were sent. And if it was appropriate, then we should count those ballots. We found one incident of that. So that is now going to be included in the recount. The last thing that was interesting that we found is, so you have teams that sit down and adjudicate ballots. An adjudication, it's, it's the idea that you're going to give voters intent. So the teams try to look as closely as they can and determine what the voter's intent was. So the first team did it one way when we had the recount, a different set of people sat down and readjudicated and found one that they didn't agree with. So again, all of these were people-related, interpretation-related situations that they found, so.
So what was the total of ballots that were?
So we had four things that changed.
So four ballots, okay.
Looking forward, we see that there's a few things we can maybe do differently in our processes so that that wouldn't happen. We also have asked, and we're working on getting some sorting equipment so that we could be prepared for this eventuality to ever happen again. Sort by the races so that we would be able just to take a race, but have, in that sort of, all of those ballots in that batch would go to that race. And then it would be much simpler for someone to pull them and recount them.
So Susan, the piece of equipment that we planned, the county plans to purchase is a little over $200,000.
It is.
By the time we buy it, it'll probably be $250,000.
Let's hope not.
Prices are going, but, but that will allow the ballots to be sorted in a way that'll maybe help us in the future. Because I'm kind of a precinct guy. I really like, you know, keeping the ballots together in precincts. That would also allow maybe a little bit better review next time, but, but we need that piece of equipment in order to do that.
So with all of that, now everything has been ran twice for the whole, the whole election. Is there something else you wanted to say? No, okay, sorry. And so our final recount, I think you have the canvas report in front of you. You've got attached to it also all the precincts and how the numbers turned out per precinct. For the Republican, for State, House District 72, this will be the person who moves on to the general election in November. Joseph Illison had 4,134 votes. Willie Billings had 4,124 votes. That is our report.
Very good. Well, I just, like yesterday, we had Lieutenant Governor's Office down here helping out with that post recount audit. And, and it took about five hours to go through the thousand ballots that were selected by, by a participant here, by, by somebody that was here to watch. And so, I mean, that was, that's quite a bit of time to review those ballots. And, and this election, as you take a look at, like I said, I'm very fascinated in precincts and how they vote. I mean, I, I believe, I didn't, I think I was told this, that, that out of, that Willie Billings won 16 precincts and Joseph Illison won 17 precincts. But then what was very curious to me is that many of these precincts, I saw at least two or three precincts that were literally one vote difference. And then there were some precincts that were outliers that would swing really big for one candidate or another. And so there was a lot of kind of inconsistencies. There was a lot of precincts that were very, very close and other precincts that, that really had a favored candidate. It was quite obvious, so.
I, I just would say that, it's my opinion, you guys don't have to agree with me if you don't want to, but it's my opinion that we had two very strong candidates.
Absolutely.
And that's why it came out so close.
I've consistently said that, that no matter what happens in this election is that we have, District 72 will be very well represented. I do know that elections are a very raw experience. You know, candidates put their heart and soul into it. They talk about their issues that they believe in. They talk to their friends and family and, and literally their entire life is consumed during this campaign season. I do have to tell this one story. Years ago, I did run for the state legislature myself. And, and it was back when we only had two precincts, or two districts in, in Washington County. I think it was 2000. And I think there were 24 precincts at that time in that district. And it was back before we had it online, and so I didn't want to jinx myself. I didn't come down here for the count. And I did receive a call though from one of my friends, and he says, hey, we've counted 20 precincts, and the good news is you're up by 100 votes. And I came down, and by the time I pulled in the parking lot, he was walking outside, and he says, bad news, you lost by 100 votes. And so what happened was Bloomington Hills, maybe I can blame Gil for this, no, just kidding. I don't know what precincts in Bloomington Hills, but suddenly they came in very big for, for David Clark. And that was who won that election at that time. And so I do appreciate kind of what it feels like to, to come up a little bit short. And I just, but thank you for your hard work and Melanie, just the tremendous effort that you and your team put into this. Please.
Few minutes, is that okay, Susan? All right, so we know how hard everybody campaigns, see it every day. But we also work hard on our end as well. We sacrifice our time with our families and away from home, and we live there. We want to make sure everything is accurate, make sure everything is correct. And one thing, of course, within the recount, which we've never done before, is we've identified a couple of things that we need to do a little bit better on our part, which is have a whole other group of people review our process. We're great. I cannot stand when it's 11 ballots that I can't, could not count for some reason. It irritates me to no end. And it is just one of those. So we, here in our office, will continue to make our process better because we do care.
You know, there's been a lot of back and forth, and I, I got into it a little bit on social media, which I hate. But, you know, sometimes I've been accused of being a little defensive, and the only reason is because I know how hard our, our, our election people work and how much they deeply care about the integrity of this election. And there, there really is, you know, reason to be concerned. I have concerns about counties across the nation that, you know, might not have the processes that we have. And I know at one time, for example, vote by mail, Melanie knows this, because when I was a citizen, I called her up and I was like, you know, do you realize Washington State uses vote by mail? And I was really against it, and. And, and I was really against it and, and I'm still, I still wish, if I had a dream, that we could go back to a national holiday where we'd all gather out on Election Day and we'd all come and vote. But what we saw, and I've told this story multiple times, is that, um, we, our polling equipment was out of date and, and our polling workers were going out of date. And, and, um, and our locations were getting harder and harder to find. And so it was at that time that, uh, that, um, Kim Hafen wisely said, we have the 2020 election coming up. We absolutely have, if we're going to convert our system, we need to do it ahead of time. And so he did it in the 2018 election and it allowed, um, our clerk's office to be prepared and for 2020. And, um, and so our, that's, that's the way our election office has always been. They've always been thinking ahead and, and going forward and, and trying to provide the best, um, voting process possible. And, and we do learn in these processes, but the processes, um, would not necessarily have changed the results, but they will make it better. They'll, they'll make it better for review. They'll make it better for auditing and transparency. And so we'll continue to work on those things, um, because it, it does matter. And I, I know that I, I do come across defensive at times, but it's, it's really just because I know how much work and effort is going on behind the scenes, so.
And it, and it does, if I can, Mr. Chairman, it, it does matter. And for, I mean, we have heard from a lot of people, uh, especially today, a lot of people that, that are passionate about this. And I, i- if nothing else, I'm encouraged that people actually care. If, if it was ambivalence or apathy towards an election, what, what a horrible and disastrous thought that would be in America. Yeah, it's, I can tell you that three of us, and I'll only speak for myself right now, but I, I know that you also, uh, agree with this. We believe in free and fair elections. And if, if the citizens of you, of Washington County, we can't control the whole state, but at least in this county, if we don't have faith in free and fair elections, I, I said it last week during the canvas, there weren't as many people here then, so I'll say it again. Uh, but if we don't have faith in free and fair elections by bullets and canned food, because that is where the country is headed at that point. And, and so, uh, I appreciate Susan going through the, the, we had to do the recount anyway. I mean, it was requested, you had to do that. But inviting people in yesterday, Walt chose the numbers or, you know, chose, said when to stop the randomizing. Um, I understand the argument and, and I'm glad that you've already looked at it. The, the argument of if we had just gone one step further, I do think that there are some people that I received calls from and, and texts today that said, well, and maybe they think there's an extra step. They think, well, the, the machine put, the tabulator put a green dot on the ballot and then, but we don't know how it counted. The green dot is the count. That is what it counted was. So, so I don't know exactly when hand counting, anybody who's ever counted ballots, I, I see my good friend Derek Brown in the back who used to be the, the State Party Chairman, but, uh, anybody who's ever can, counted ballots by hand at a convention or somewhere else, it is a nightmare of how, of how it can be, of just of how much of a, a time consumer and people's, their eyes become fatigued, their, their brains get a little foggy. So I don't know that, that hand counting is always going to be the bastion of perfection. I do care about accuracy. And, and whether it's a machine, if it was hand counting, if it was a committee of 50 people, I care about accuracy in the count. And, and so I appreciate any steps that we, and, and would call on, and you've already talked about it. And, and look, as a tight fiscal conservative, I really don't want to spend what I'm sure will be a quarter of a million dollars with our current inflation.
Trying to get a grant.
That, yeah, a grant would be even better. That's great. Um, to, but to pay for whatever we need to do, to make sure that we instill the faith and sincere belief that, that their vote counted and whatever the outcome was, that, that it was free and fair. And sometimes you're going to win an election and sometimes you'll lose and you won later on, so that's good. Um, but, but I, I do want you to make sure that we, and, and I'm pleased that you'll take whatever steps we can, follow the law first and foremost, and then to make sure that we tighten up any process and, and that we, some of the recommendations that we heard the other day, I fully agree with. And you say, you know, that is great information. In, in a call for utmost transparency, let's provide whatever we can legally so that the citizens look and, and say, yep, this was, regardless of how it turned out, it was fair.
I'd like to say, oh, Mr. Please.
This has been probably, like so many things in our country, fairly divisive of people assuming that commissioners can do certain things. And I certainly learned in my race that I am the most powerful commissioner genie that could have prevented things from happening nationwide, according to some. But, uh, the truth is, is that we have lanes that we stay in. Other elected officials have lanes that they stay in. Susan doesn't come over and tell us what to do and because of state law, we don't go over there and tell her what to do. Doesn't mean that at the tip of the spear that commissioners are often thought that we can do anything we want. And that's really not true. We've been counseled on, ongoing, but especially lately about our legal responsibility towards the election results. And that while we are considered a second set of eyes on what you do, we are not the eye on what you do. And, uh, we've been instructed yesterday by Ryan in the back of the procedures for the recount. Susan, Melanie, your office followed those procedures exactly as current law. It would be improper for us to say at this point that we shouldn't follow the law. Because I stood right there and raised my hand that I would follow both the United States Constitution and the Utah Constitution together with, with its pertinent laws and policies. Or that to change and for us to not only get a machine, but to say, go to a different process on verifying every single ballot is going to require power and diplomacy and legislation greater than we have power to enact. And I believe that there are many who have been newly elected statewide who might look into that or at least try to make an election more transparent to the point that everyone agrees. Um, I lost a very close race by 60 votes to someone I consider my dearest political friend, Dean Cox. Not to throw Victor Adam under the bus, but I learned so much from Dean prior to his passing that I've said before, and I agree that that was the best election that I ever lost. And because of that, and it was very narrow, ended up being less than 100 votes. Um, I'm in a better place. Now, I am pretty sure that this outcome is painful for all the reasons Victor said. I would hope that those who lose in any race will step forward, run again. Maybe a different office, but certainly their value, their energy, their excitement and the way they see things cannot be buried just because they lose. And therefore, um, I applaud your group. I feel like you've done everything possible. Um, I'll defer my motion until Devin wants to say anything.
Yeah, we had a, a letter received earlier today, um, asking us to take into some considerations. And Devin, you had some review of the state code on that.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we did receive a, a letter earlier today. Just to review, under the law, as you mentioned, Commissioner Almquist, state law governs how the Board of Canvassers handles the proceedings today. You have two obligations. Number one, review the summary that's been presented today. You have it before you. Number two, certify the results. You don't have discretion to say, gosh, that's close, let's do it again. Oh my goodness, it was really close. Maybe let's push this off and whatever. You don't have that discretion. So just to review those obligations under state law, you don't have the discretion just to push things off because you feel like it. Um, we did receive a demand letter from Curtin McConkey Lawyers earlier today, uh, demanding that this proceeding not, uh, go forward, that commissioners halt canvas vote. Um, my office has reviewed the letter. I see that it's without merit. There's nothing in this letter that persuades me that the canvas shouldn't go forward. So.
And there was, there was some definitions that the state law gave.
That would allow it.
What would allow it?
There's nothing in state law that says you can put off, uh, canvassing the results. What state law says is if you as Board of Canvassers, Canvassers are aware of a clear omission, a mistake in the summary that's been provided, you, or excuse me, actually the elections officer can correct that mistake, that specific mistake. But it's evidence of a clear omission or a mistake basis for that correction. If you don't have evidence of a clear omission or a mistake, you're obligated to go forward and certify the result.
Mr. Chairman, since I wrote the letter, I appreciate the opportunity to address the council's background.
Commissioners, this is not a public hearing. It's, it's a, it's a Board of Canvassers chance to review the summary that's been presented by our elections clerk. It's not a public hearing.
I understand that, but I would really appreciate the place to make such a good of a council's presentation on this issue. It's very, very important. I feel, I think there is an anomaly that.
Heard in the recount yesterday.
Could you take like one minute and state it from right there? I can hear you quite well.
I remember those days. Well, let me tell you, this, this is the problem is that yesterday, when there's a recount being done, there's 35,000 votes roughly that were, and there was 1,000 roughly that were then in the recount. Of that 1,000, on the screen, people were able to see with regard to the number of votes that was being assigned to each of the candidates. Of course, this includes lots of candidates, not just the two in this race. So of those 1,000 or so votes, it turned out that 229 in this race were being, were counted. And what came from those 229 was really an odd situation. What happened is the outcome that showed that there was 139 votes for Billings, which is 68.8%, and only 84 votes for Ellison, 39.2%. Now, the reason why that becomes a difficult issue is that, uh, that's fully inconsistent with this close race that appears to have happened. But it was a, it was a sampling of random picks of 229 out of 8,500 votes in that district, which is a very fair sample to take as a pool to determine how fair and how accurate the outcome was. So what I would suggest, since it looks, appears as though Mr. Billings has won by roughly the same ratio that it was at the county convention, that you would reconsider and do a hand count, not of all the 35,000, perhaps to do another 1,000 and see if you get another roughly 229 that have the same ratio. And if you do, then you, that's, that's fully statistically accurate as to what the outcome really was.
Very good.
Challenges, of course, to machines, which is very important for you to consider for the community, voters and candidates.
I absolutely appreciate your comments and, um, we didn't have, um, please don't applaud, don't applaud. It's not a public meeting or a public hearing. I, I would encourage all of you who find that inconsistency to go through precinct by precinct this race and you will find out why that is. You'll find out that if we would have polled precincts from certain areas that, that, um, that Joseph Ellison won, the, the results, that's what I find as someone who is fascinated by voting patterns, this, this race is unique in the fact that you have some precincts that turned out very big for one candidate or another, and then other precincts remained literally one vote apart. And so there is an explanation for that. And there is no way, as we, as we described, for us to count just this race. You have to count all 30,000 ballots. It, we've already reviewed our processes. We've reviewed the state code and, um, and we've done everything we can to maintain transparency and, and in this process. And so the results wouldn't, we don't find any evidence that, um, that there would be a change. Now 10 votes is extremely close. It's closer than 100, it's closer than 60. You know, it's, it's very close, so.
Of course, were random votes that were counted.
Yeah.
Across the board. So if you have a statistical reality that indicates otherwise the outcome.
But Tim and I do very much appreciate you as a human being. Um, I think if you look at, if you dig into the votes in precinct by precinct, you'll find how that could very well be the case depending on which precincts you would have polled. So that's, that's my answer.
Susan, to that, let me ask you a question then. To that point was the, you recounted not 1,000 ballots.
We recounted everything.
All 30, was it 34,000? 34,000 ballots roughly? Because you can't pull out just the District 72 race.
Correct.
The, the exercise yesterday, was that trying to show a representative population of the vote as a whole or was that trying to show accuracy?
That was just trying to show that if you did a paper ballot, that we, that it was processed correctly, that it was accurate. That was its goal and people admitted it, it accomplished that goal.
And did you find any errors in the count? We talked about the four ballots. You, you acknowledged those, but of those the machine counted, were, were they accurate to how the person actually marked it on the paper ballot?
Yes. The, the green bubble showed up in the right place every time and they read it off so that everybody could hear. It was in attendance and even those that were in here watching, got the audio to work so that they could see that the ballot matched exactly, accurately what was counted by, had already been counted by the software.
Okay, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take a point of privilege, I guess. Um, Willie, if you can make your comment or question like within two minutes max, then, um, we, we're not going to open this up into a public hearing.
Chairman?
Yes, absolutely.
Nobody on Zoom can hear him.
Nobody on Zoom can hear. So could you come to the mic, Willie?
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, first off, I, anything that's said or done in this has no bearing on the county or the county personnel. They are of utmost integrity. Yeah, we're not questioning them at all. When they did the, and it was, it was named on the website as a recount audit, okay? And when we got, got there, they did compare this, the, the dots on the paper to the dots on the electronic version. And we're, we're convinced that that, that data transferred over. But there was no counting that took place of that. And I, I know that they're saying, they're saying that wasn't our purpose. But if you're going to do an audit recount and you're going to verify that, that the data was transferred, but you don't have a simple database built into that program that will count those votes, what was the purpose then? Because we had two separate entity, people that were doing that recount, watching the screen, listening and, and accounting for every single vote by every candidate in every race. And they compared those notes and this is the, this is what you received part of this. And the anomaly here is that out of the 21 ballots, I believe, uh, Ellison won four batches and I won 15 and we tied on two. Statistically, when you do a 1% um, random sample, that, that doesn't work out, but they did a 3% random sample, which is a lot, you know, three times larger than the normal to get that type of random sample. And it included all of the, the precincts. Like we saw precinct, we saw Tocqueville, we saw Laverka, we saw Hurrican, we saw, everything was represented in that count. And I won with 138 votes or, and, and he won with 89, so that's a 60, 40 split. That anomaly is not small. If that was one or 2%, we'd go, okay. But it's 20%. That, that is, you can't ignore that. You can't just say, oh, well. Okay, something deeper has to be looked into that. Uh, and to finalize my comments here, I want it clear that I, I am not doing this to win this election. Would I love to win? So bad my teeth ache. Okay? But the reality is there's mass dissent in Washington County and across the country of lack of voter faith and trust in our election systems and specifically in machines. And as leadership, as, as leadership, it's our responsibility not just to legislate. It's to, it's to listen to the constituents, listen to the, the people out there and do everything possible to help facilitate trust, respect and confidence in our election processes. If we don't do that, we are not doing our jobs. And so a recount doesn't mean I'm going to win. I may get less votes. I'm clear of that. But I'm okay losing this election. I'm not okay. I would have been okay until, until they canvassed this, until that audit took place. And when it went from, I'm down by seven votes to I won by 20% on a 3% random thing across the county, I think we need to look into this deeper, do another one. And if they had, if they had counted those votes and their count was equal to this count, we'd say, okay, they're the same. They didn't. They can't even count them in their software.
Well, it's my understanding that they, and we could go quite long into the night. Have you had a chance to review the precinct by precinct?
Oh, yeah.
So you know what, you know how odd it is. I, I don't know, you, you've been around this a long time. You might find it as odd as I did where some precincts went big for you and some precincts went big for Joe. And then there were a lot of precincts that were really, really tight. So, um, do you, and, and. So, do you, and we did do a recount, like, what we're reporting on right now is a recount of 30,000 ballots.
And the audit's actual goal was to prove the accuracy of the ballot. So, these guys wanted different things to happen, and like I said, we can work on that, but that was not the goal of the audit. The goal of the audit was to show that, you have a piece of paper in front of you, the voter, whoever they were, colored in specific dots. The software counted it that way, and then showed you where those specific, what it counted by the green bubbles. So, I'm sorry, it was a different, a different goal than what he's talking about.
Right. And I understand what the goal was, but when you validate that the data transfer took place accurately, and we, but you didn't count the green dots.
Well, and, you know, and I-
You can't just say the machine counts correctly.
So, why don't, I appreciate that, why don't, we're not gonna turn it into a public hearing. Willie, I really appreciate, we're gonna have some explanation, both from Susan and then Ryan, if you wouldn't mind coming up and, if needed, explain what the audit's purpose was, let's explain to everybody what the green dots represent, and then go from there.
I was right there, I know what the green dots, they represent what was on the paper ballot represented here, but if you move those over but don't count the green dots, how do we have faith in how they were tabulated, if you don't tabulate them?
Well, as I understand it, and Susan, you're next to the mic, so you correct me if I'm wrong, but the green is the count.
Correct. It had already been counted.
It's not saying, here's where they colored it, and then another step, and then let's go count all the green dots. It's saying, that is the count, by showing you where the green dot is, this is what we counted.
It had already tabulated.
So, when you show the paper ballot, and you say, here's the ballot, that's not my ballot, here's the ballot, and here's what was counted, and all of the counters show up to exactly what was on the ballot, therefore, that's the accuracy of the count. Let me just, Susan, you can chime in on that, but let me just ask one question, Willie. You said you had two people counting, tabulating yesterday?
We had two separate people.
Tallying.
They were tallying, every time a vote, they had a piece of paper with everybody's name, all the candidates' names across the board, every time you put the screen up there, and they announced it by her, they made a check mark, and they just did that the entire five hours on every candidate, two different people did it independently of each other, came together, and this was the result, and how do I win 15 of the 20?
And were their numbers identical?
Within one.
So humans were slightly off, though?
Well, we know that, that's not an issue here. I don't count that. What I'm saying is, the integrity of the machines has to be proven, and if you don't compare that to a hand thing that makes us all feel good about this, well, then what happens if you won't allow that to take place, then us that don't feel good about it, you're throwing fuel on the fire, and we're going, well, why won't you? And it adds fuel to the fire. It doesn't inspire people, you guys.
Fair point. Susan?
Susan, do you wanna talk to that, or Ryan?
Sure. So, as we prepare and follow the state law, state code, on what we do with elections, it's very important to us that things are accurate. It's also very important that we don't release results prematurely. So, I understand that they wanted to have some summary reports. That would be inappropriate and inconsistent with the fact that you are here today to canvass. We didn't canvass yesterday, we didn't give any reports. When they talked to us about, well, how about at the first audit, because we did already count everything and audited before, it was the same kind of a thing. This is what we're trying to do, is prove the accuracy of the vote. And we believe that we did that with the green dots pulling up and saying, yep, this is how it was counted, look at the ballot, they match. That was the goal of the audit. Does that make sense, I hope?
Very good.
I wish I had something else to tell you.
Yeah.
That's if you completely trust the machines and don't have any question about it.
Yeah.
Okay. I watched yesterday, they made a statement that the ballot, or the, what are they called, batches?
Batches.
Have to stay together.
Trust tending them and keeping all of the tracking.
You tended them? But I did watch them say, okay, there's this one, there's this one, oh, hold on to this one for a second, this one over here, because this one's not right, and they were separating them. Why can't you take a batch of 50, of which there's only 10 or 12 of my race in each batch?
Less than that.
Maybe less than that. And then if you unbet and say, 73, 74, 75, 72, 73, keep them all together, count those 10, account for them, hand count, I could, I'll bet we can get 50 people to volunteer right now in this room. Okay?
And how impartial would that be? Because these are people representing a candidate, I'm sorry, that's why we did the machine.
You could get anybody to do that, that's not part of our race.
Well, very good, very good. We appreciate you, and thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to be clear from the county attorney's perspective, I don't see any code provision under state law that would allow the elections official to do what Mr. Anderson and Mr. Billings are asking you to do.
Is there anything that says we can't?
Excuse me, excuse me.
Answer my question.
So, there's nothing under state law that allows you to do that? The elections official has to follow state law, we can't make it up on the go.
Thank you, and we've already done our recount.
She's administering state law.
And that's been my point throughout this process, as we've talked with our clerk auditor's office, is understanding that you cannot change the rules in midstream. I mean, there are going to be modifications that we change in policy, things, tools that we bring on. I, this distrust of machines is interesting to me, I, these are not, I remember the old touchscreen stuff where you'd touch it, and then you'd see the little thing roll, and you wasn't sure how your ballots were counted, but these are where we have 30,000 paper ballots. This is like a really high-tech Scantron machine that's not connected to the internet. And if some of you don't trust this machine, I don't know if you've ever been in a Republican or a party convention and tried to count 500 ballots by hand, I don't wanna wish that on any of you, and I don't wanna wish it on our staff. And you just can't have random people start pulling apart these batches and counting. And there is not the evidence that I've seen, even though this is an extremely close race, there is no evidence to show that there would, that there's any votes that would change this election. And like, you know, I used to be president of the Utah Association of Counties, and so I'm very familiar with our county clerks here in the state. And one of my favorite county clerks would always make the comment, I have not met a politician yet that I want to go to jail for. What you're basically implying is that somebody had to commit a crime in order to, well, basically you are, either you are.
I can cite the law that states exactly the applied grounds for recount.
We have had a recount.
Section 402, 1, sub C. For any error of any board of canvassers or judges of elections in counting the votes or declaring the result of the election, if the error would change the result. All we're talking about is an error in the process of counting.
But that's where I have to disagree with you, Tim, that I am not as sitting in the role of, to review, I am not seeing evidence that after the recount, after a thorough recount, that there's any ballots out there that would change it, and so I-
It's a statistical anomaly, and you would not do a full recount if you just did another random run.
I don't believe that's in state law either.
Now, so I-
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you're citing Section 402? That's for election contests. It hasn't been, it has not been canvassed yet. I wanna be clear-
Once you make a statement, it will be canvassed, and then we'll request another recount.
It hasn't been canvassed yet, so you can't use that statute as a basis to say we're not going to certify this election.
Yeah.
We're not there yet.
It's my understanding that next steps, if you don't like the results, is that you go into court and try to present evidence before a judge, right?
No, it isn't. We request a recount just after which rejected here, that's what this allows for. Since this is now the canvass, within seven days following the canvass, the candidate has the right to ask for a recount. So we are still at the recount stage, we're just asking to be done, that the clerk decides to do it in a way that's fair.
Well, I'm going to have to take back control of this meeting. I wanted to be, you know, have dialogue, but I also wanna be very respectful that this item is our county clerk's item, and she is presenting the results of a very thorough recount, and speaking to issues and concerns that people have, and addressing a recount audit that we had. Now, I will acknowledge that out of the 1,000 ballots, there were more votes in that run for candidate Willie Billings than for Joe Eleson. But I can tell you that if you look at this, if you review your precincts, you will see why that is. This race swung very heavily in certain precincts, and if you would have counted Tocqueville, you know, it would have been very heavily for Joe. And so, I'm comfortable with our processes, I'm comfortable with what's gone into it. I still deeply respect Willie Billings and him as a human being and a candidate. I think that District 72 will be well represented, I think the fact that both these candidates are so qualified is a reason that this race is extremely close.
I agree.
To wrap up my comments, I don't even remember the year, but I ran for St. George City Council.
Okay, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we accept the results of the canvas recount. We have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you so much.
So, to be clear, Devin, they can now take it to the next step if they'd like. Is that right?
It's up to them what they want to do.
If they want to. So, your boo is for us following the law. If you want to go ahead and proceed, you have an avenue to do that. This is America, we have almost endless opportunities for appeal.
Yeah. Well, that was disappointing. We're on to item five, which is consideration of proclamation of 2022-23, a proclamation declaring July of 2022 U.S. George Washington Month in Washington County. Jonathan Little?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you for the time. A number of years ago, I had the great privilege of being part of what was called the 716 Club, which was up in Salt Lake City. It was a group of supporters for the USS Salt Lake City, which was a ballistic missile, or a Los Angeles class attack sub. Because of that involvement, it gave me a greater appreciation, even though I've been in the Navy for the last 22 years, of the camaraderie that can exist between municipalities.
Jonathan, you deserve a lot of attention for this, and I don't believe that, with the noise in the background in the hallway, that this important step can be properly picked up by our CEC, and we'd like to be able to hear it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Because I do care, unlike someone who didn't care.
Once again, that experience gave me a greater appreciation for the camaraderie that can exist between a community and the namesake of a ship or vessel in our United States Navy. A little while ago, I became acquainted with some members of the USS George Washington. It is a ship that has a proud heritage, has been serving our nation for the last 30 years, it celebrated its 30th birthday this month. It's a ship that has served with distinction, and has been forward deployed in many areas of the world, most recently to Japan. In looking at something that we could do that would show them the great support that our community has for the armed forces, this seemed like an opportunity that we could demonstrate that. Not knowing if there's further opportunities there to do more with the ship that we share a namesake, but it was a chance for us to show in a small way our appreciation for the men and women who have served over the last 30 years on that magnificent ship. Therefore, I have put this before the commission as an opportunity for us to demonstrate that, and appreciate your consideration of this.
Fantastic, and I think there's a flag that's gonna be presented later, right?
Yes, as part of this exchange, the ship has flown in commemoration of all of the people here in this county. Our new administration building and everything else, they've flown a flag in honor of Washington County. And so that will be presented near the completion of the building.
Fantastic.
Awesome.
Very good. Thank you, Jonathan, and thank you for your service to our country when you're not serving our employees here at Washington County.
It's my pleasure, thank you.
And the Navy Reserve, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and adopt proclamation number 2022-23, declaring July of 2022 USS George Washington Month in Washington County.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Our next item is item six, consideration of ordinance, 2022-1211-0, an ordinance amending the Washington County Code, modifying the Title X zoning regulations by adding a Pine Valley overlay zone. Scott Messel?
Yes, I'll be brief. With land use law, there are many different tools that can be used to oversee and regulate land use and how, and finding that balance of property rights between what you can do and what your neighbor can do. We have some very unique communities in Washington County, one of which is Pine Valley. The residents of Pine Valley, many of them have been looking for a way that they could more specifically be able to-
Have a voice.
Yeah, have a place, have a voice, and be able to manage what their community looks like. There, our county has zoning and land use ordinances that are countywide, and they felt, the residents felt that they had, that their community was unique enough that they could, that they wanted to see something else done. And so, through this very vetted process, the, many of the residents in this room from Pine Valley have presented a Pine Valley overlay zone, and so this zone, you will, it's almost on top of what the base zone for, that is already existing in the Pine Valley community. The Pine Valley community being what is described in our Pine Valley zoning and general plan map, and what is called out in the general plan. The overlay zone, just a brief overview, it has some more guidelines and regulations in place to try to keep the look, feel, the look and feel and character of Washington, of, sorry, of Pine Valley. And it was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this overlay. And so it is before the County Commission at this time as the land use authority. I'll be happy to answer any questions, or go into more detail if you'd like.
So my understanding, Scott, is, you know, this is basically a guiding document, not necessarily a regulatory document. What I mean by that is, you know, it does have a vision for the valley, it does have one extra step in process as far as review, advisory board back to the Planning Commission, but ultimately, land use does continue to reside with the Planning Commissioners, and then coming to the County Commission, but this is more kind of a general plan document. Would that be correct?
Kind of. It is an adopted ordinance, and so it is regulatory, but many of the items that were called out specifically in there are more of a guiding, there wasn't as much thou shalt as it sure would be nice. You know, they would like to have a certain look with different lighting was in place. We have county standards that require curb, gutter, and sidewalk, and there are many in Pine Valley that don't want curb, gutter, and sidewalk in their community, they feel that that would wreck the historical look of it. It's common in larger communities for there to be neighborhood bodies that, when a project comes in, that the neighborhood body reviews the application for land use or development that's coming in, and so although this is a smaller community, it's not uncommon to have an extra step in place for the residents to be able to share their opinion on what happens in their community.
Okay. Other questions, Commissioners?
No, no, I had a chance to review it.
And I agree.
Appreciate the residents of Pine Valley, you know, we always believe the best government is the one closest to the people, and while this isn't a government entity, but it, I appreciate the engagement of the residents of Pine Valley for getting together and trying to put together what would, what makes good sense for their community.
That statement, just barely, you channeled- That statement, just barely, you channeled Commissioner Cox when you said that. I almost looked over there.
Okay, you're right.
It has something to do with CEC, I think.
Yeah, must be, must be, must be, so.
Mr. Chair, I too appreciate what they've done. And I notice there are many here who respect what that valley meant to them and did to my parents over 40 years ago. So having said that, Scott, are you complete?
Yes.
Your presentation. I move that we approve ordinance number 2022-1211-0, an ordinance amending the Washington County Code, modifying the Title X zoning regulations by adding the Pine Valley overlay zone.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Our next, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
That was kind of opposite of the last group, yeah. We should have started with you guys first, so.
Yeah, I think that now is zero, right? It offsets.
Yeah, it offset, yeah. Now we're happy, so very good. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Our next item is consideration of ordinance 2022-1212-0, an ordinance approving vacation of a portion of the original 1953 Dalton Wash roadway right-of-way and alignment in Washington County, Utah. And Scott Messel? No, Ron Whitehead, are you speaking to this? No, please. It's been a long time coming. I'm looking forward to exciting, to doing this, so.
This road vacation plat is part of an ongoing process we've been working on for a couple of years to get a new right-of-way in where the property owners have moved the road up in the valley that better suited their property lines and their access to their property. And we agreed with the property owners that once we had that document in place, we would then vacate a portion of the old right-of-way that crossed their properties. So there's still some of the old right-of-way that will be there, both ends and other areas. But this is the ones that crossed through the property that were part of moving the right-of-way through there.
Well, and it, this is the first thing that I ever encountered. You and I went up there, it wasn't even five days in Commission seat. It made no sense that we dissect someone's land when it clearly was obvious that we could go around it and they would have their chunk. I mean, I wouldn't want my neighbors' access to their house through my front door. So this makes total sense. I'm willing to make a motion if there aren't any questions.
No, this has been a while, and it was requested by the landowners originally and because the road had been changed prior to this. And so we wanted the right-of-way to actually reflect the road as it existed. And so that was what we did. And then a part of that was to vacate any existing claims. So that's what the county is doing, is vacating that, so.
So once we get this signed by you, we will record everything, and we should all be through.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve ordinance number 2022-1213-0, adding the Washington County, nope, sorry, I'm going to go back one, I was ahead, sorry. 2022-1212-0, an ordinance approving vacation of a portion of the original 1953 Dalton Wash roadway right-of-way and alignment in Washington County, Utah.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, Ron. Appreciate that. Item made is consideration of ordinance 2022-1213-0, an ordinance adding the Washington County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to the county code. Devin Snow?
Thank you, Commissioners. For several years now, our county attorney's office has coordinated a criminal justice council that meets to discuss how to reform criminal justice in the county and improve criminal justice here. Recently, our legislature passed legislation requiring that that be adopted in every county. So this ordinance would formalize that coordinating council that's sort of been meeting more informally. This would adopt that council as part of our code and then set up requirements for how to appoint members to that council.
And this has been our committee that's been meeting, kind of, right?
It's the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, or CJCC as it's lovingly referred to.
Yes, very good, very good. So we're just codifying it.
Correct.
Into code.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 2022-1213, ordinance adding the Washington County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to the county code.
Second.
Have a second and a motion on item made. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item nine is consideration of resolution R-2022-2979, a resolution designating membership for the Washington County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. And Devin Snow?
Yeah, similar item. So before we looked at an ordinance to create the council, this resolution would appoint members to that council. The membership includes the commission chair, the county attorney, sheriff, the lead public defender, St. George Chief of Police, our presiding district court judge at Fifth District Court, our presiding justice court judge, adult probation and parole, Southwest Behavioral Health Director, and Children's Justice Center Director. That's the resolution.
Very good.
Chairman, I move we approve resolution R-2022-2979, a resolution designating membership for the Washington County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 10 is consideration of resolution R-2022-2975, a resolution approving the notice of grant and agreement award of the cooperative agreement between NRCS and Washington County for the Warner Draw supplemental watershed plan project. Ron Whitehead, I have you down for this.
This has been before you a couple of times in the last few months.
I think it looked very familiar to us, yes. We were commenting about that.
This is really one of those that we would like to just say, yes, we'll take it because we have been studying what's going on over in some of these draws and drainage facilities along the Virgin River and Warner Valley. And that has come up with some things we can do to better the system over there. Once we come up with those items from the surveys, NRCS offered us some money to do some planning as to what we could do. We showed the plan would work and that, so now they provided us the funding to go ahead and engineer what was planned, get it ready to construct. This engineering part, for planning it all out and getting it ready to go is paid for completely by NRCS, so it costs the county nothing in cooperative agreements.
Very good. Well? Can I have a motion on this?
I think it's Hill's turn, but I'll take it. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve resolution R-2022-2975, approving the notice of grant and agreement award of the cooperative agreement between NRCS and Washington County for the Warner Draw supplemental watershed plan project.
Second.
And all those, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 11, which is consideration of resolution R-2022-2976, a resolution approving a technical planning assistant program funds cooperative agreement with Utah Department of Transportation. Commissioner Oomquist, I have you down for this.
Yes, thanks, Chair. UDOT recognized, I don't know, many years ago maybe, that smaller areas that still had major roads going through them just didn't have the funds, some counties, some municipalities, to address the planning necessary for UDOT to expand the road. You know, I mean, there's lots of places where UDOT has a four-lane highway that goes through a very small town and may not have the planning funds or whatever. So they brought forth this Technical Planning Assistance Program, which we're the beneficiaries of. They're supplying Washington County with $80,000, $80,000, and we're matching to the amount of $25,000, so it's not even matched. But the results will be that we have some extra funding to plan for roads. And probably more critical than even a small county is a large one that's growing quickly.
Yeah.
And that we need extra assistance in determining what roads go where and how to acquire that property. It's mostly a tool to back up D-Tech and all of the properties that they try to purchase for road expansion and rights-of-way. So that's it in a nutshell. If it would be okay with our deputy clerk that in the third whereas, would you just add a few words? Says UDOT will providing, will be providing? And then on the last part of that, same whereas it says, and transportation needs within the scope of work instead of withing?
Very good.
That's my motion to approve resolution R-2022-2976.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Item 12 is consideration of resolution R-2022-2977, a resolution approving a commission agreement with Cusfield, Cushman, and Wakefield. And I have Devin Snow down to speak to this.
Sure. As you know, Commissioners, the Government Services Administration, the federal government issued a request for lease proposals, looking for space for the United States District Court. The county has suitable space or property that would be suitable. In order to submit a lease offer to lease that property to the government, federal government, there's a requirement that the county signs a commission agreement with the GSA's broker. That's what this is, is a commission agreement with Cushman and Wakefield.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept resolution, approve resolution R-2022-2977, approving a commission agreement with Cushman and Wakefield.
What was the word, reluctant second?
Reluctant second.
Reluctantly.
So we have a reluctantly seconded motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. This has been an educational process, engaging with the federal government and GSA. And it's obvious why the federal government takes so long to do everything.
Oh, my goodness.
13 is consideration of resolution R-2022-2978, a resolution approving and amending, approving an amended lease offer to the General Services Administration. Devin Snow?
Thank you. This is also on the Boulevard building that the county is proposing to have GSA lease. As you remember, the commission about a month ago issued an initial offer. In response to that offer on that, to lease that building, the GSA has reached out to the county and asked for certain clarifications and certain changes. And so staff and our administrator have worked on an amended offer that's presented to you today that would go to GSA for their consideration as part of this process. Staff and administration continues to fine tune a couple of those forms. And so the resolution makes the approval subject to review of legal counsel. So we'll finish fine tuning those numbers, but that'll all be subject to an approval by legal counsel.
Very good. Well, thank you. Commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes.
Devin, even though it's spelled out exactly the amount of square footage and approximately the location of that square footage in the building, we have others that are going to occupy the remaining part of that building, including ourselves.
Correct.
On page two of three, I just want to make sure that it's very clear where it says percent of government occupancy, 100%. That they understand that that's 100% of their 26,000 square feet they're leasing.
Correct.
I want to make sure that's terribly clear to them.
Okay, yeah, we will make that very clear.
Okay.
We estimate that it's about 55% of square footage in the building.
Overall, okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve resolution number R-2022-2978, approving an amended lease offer to the General Services Administration, pending subject of review by legal.
Very good.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 14 is consideration of resolution R-2022-2980, a resolution approving contracts with the state of Utah for services provided by Washington County's Children's Justice Center. Devin Snow?
We've kept Devin busy today.
We really have.
Yeah, he's earned his money.
Yeah, unfortunately, Christine Pike was out today. She's in Salt Lake, wanted to be here. But she asked that I kind of cover this item today. But basically, this is a state contract that's been in place for years and years. This is a new one, but rather than a renewal this year, it's a fully new one. But reviewed it, it's acceptable on our side from a legal standpoint. But basically, our Children's Justice Center provides certain services for children in our county. It's a multidisciplinary response to sexual abuse of children, physical abuse of children in other cases that involve crimes against children or if they're a primary witness. And so our Children's Justice Center provides really important functions in our county. This is a contract with the state where they would provide funding that helps pay for that program. Second of all, the second contract covered in this resolution is for forensic interview services, also a service that's provided by our Justice Center as well. And some additional funding from the state for that program as well. So that's what you're being asked to.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve resolution R-2022-2980, approving contracts with the state of Utah for services provided by the Washington County Children's Justice Center.
Second. Devin, would you put on item, line six on the first contract, that the prompt payment discount actually says, has an NA typed in there? Where that blank is? Would you see if you could do that?
Where are we talking about, Commissioner?
Line six, item six, under, beginning with contracting parties is line 196. Prompt payment discount, if any, would you fill that in with a not applicable?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
You know, when you made that second, Commissioner, I thought, given the fact that you were implying a motion, your second, you were going to say enthusiastically, because you worked so hard with the Children's Justice Center. I thought you were going to say, I enthusiastically second for this.
Since we're balancing out seconds, I enthusiastically second.
Very good. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. At this time, I'm going, Devin, do I need a motion? Or can I simply explain that we are going to leave commission meeting and now sit as the county's municipal building authority?
I think a motion would be appropriate.
Okay, very good. At this time, I'd like to accept a motion that we leave the commission meeting and we would now be acting as the county municipal building authority.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. We are now sitting as Washington County's municipal building authority. And we have item 15, which is consideration of resolution R-2022-2981, a resolution of the municipal building authority of Washington County to convey, the conveyance of real property to Washington County. And I was going to have you speak to that as well, Devin, since you're on a roll here, so.
Sure, and this also relates to the lease offer on the Boulevard building. As part of this process, we determined, you know, that this property was still in the, titled in the county's building.
We're talking about our Boulevard building up on the corner.
Correct. This is a deed that would go from the county's building authority to the county so that you can execute a lease at some point. If the government awards the lease to the county, the county would be the landlord under that lease.
Well, that's great. We've had the bond paid off for quite a while, so we might as well take title.
I move that we approve resolution number R-2022-2981, declaring the conveyance of the property so indicated to Washington County from the municipal building authority.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. I'd now like to receive a motion that we leave the municipal building authority and reconvene as commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. We are now on to item 16, consideration of our Public Works report. Ron Whitehead?
This is one of our quarterly reports. I'll briefly go over some of the stuff we've been working on that's now finished and give you an idea of where we'll be at next quarter. We're submitting our final bill to UDOT for reimbursement for the Highway 18 project. It's taken us a while to get our contractors' final invoice in and our engineers' final invoice. But we've got that and we're ready to submit that, and we've come in under budget from what was allowable there. So not only did we hurry and get it done, we still held them to their budget items they were given. The bridges are in place at the Confluence Park, so our part with that should be through for a little while. We've been working to make sure the bridges were set properly and that, so I've been told they look pretty nice out there.
Oh, they did a great job, and your team and Todd Edwards, our engineer, did a fantastic job, so.
Thank you. I'll let him know that. Gas line that's coming down Highway 18 that some people see, you'll get to see it soon. As I drive, that road is progressing on. It's in the Spanish Trails Road area now. It will be progressing south towards Damron Valley here pretty soon. Most of it's done in UDOT's right-of-way, so we don't have to deal with it. But there are short stretches that go out into county roads that we have to do our own inspection and keep track of where that's at on there. That kind of just small summary of what we've been working. That kind of is just small summary of what we've been working on the past quarter. There's much more than that. I'd be happy to fill you in if you'd like to, some point on that, but what we're planning on for next quarter is gonna be very busy. We will start the chip seal projects August 8th, following as a tentative schedule for those projects of where we'll be chipping and what roads. Now, I will get this to our IT people and have them get it put up on the website so people can go to the website and see when their area will be worked on to help avoid any traffic problems and that. So we'll start in Colob, the Colob Terrace Road, starting at the top end and ending at Virgin County sections only. This will be August 8th through the 10th. August 11th, we'll be down in the Gould Wash Road from the Hurricane Line to the Three Points Center. We put some rotor mill on that, and it's been there for a year now, and it's stayed in pretty good shape, so we're gonna chip that and try and get that set up to where it'll be part of a regular rotation. That's August 11th. August 15th through 18th, New Harmony area. August 15th, New Harmony Heights, Phase 2 to Cemetery. August 16th, U-44 to 900 East, 900 East north up into that subdivision. August 17th, U-144 to 1100 East, and 1100 East, we go north again up into the subdivisions there. August 18th, we'll be on 3900 East, 200 South, 80 South, and then U-144 to 3430 East and the Santa Rosa Drive, 3500 East. Then August 22nd through the 25th, we'll finish the New Harmony side, start the Blackridge Ranches side, August 22nd, 2900 East by the library and finish U-144. August 23rd, we'll be on Old Highway 91 from Colob Branches to Badger Way, Badger Way, 2130 South, 2650 South. August 24th, Blackridge Ranches area roads. August 25th, Blackridge Ranches area roads. August 29th through September 1st, we'll be in the Blackridge Ranches area roads, in the subdivisions themselves there, the older part of that. And September 6th through the 8th, Blackridge Ranches area roads, Old Highway 91 and Badger Way. And September 12th through the 15th, we'll finish up the Colob Branches area roads, Old Highway 91, finishing up everything we have at that point. If all goes well, that'll be right towards the end of September with no rain delays or no delays with any of our products we've got ordered, so it'll be moving quite fast through there.
Now, I wouldn't mind a rain delay, so you can't get delayed for anything but rain, but it has to be nice and gentle.
Arrange it for the weekend, please.
For the weekends, okay.
How could you, as a lifelong Washington County resident, how could you say a rain delay? That, that is just...
Yeah, we've been praying for rain a lot.
Arrange the rain for the weekend, I'll take it, just put it on the weekend.
Chief Coleman's about to pitch.
We've got a lot of oil product that will be sitting there waiting, and they charge us money to wait for.
We don't want that, we don't want the rain, so balance those out.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Very good, thank you, Ron.
Old Dixie Highway 91.
Well, very good. Commissioners, do I have a motion on the Public Works Report?
Move that we approve the, accept the report that was presented by Ron.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Our final item is Commissioners' Report. Commissioners?
Just a shout out to Susan and her group of counters and volunteers and county employees and...
Yeah, I'm glad you acknowledged our county clerk's office. I'm exhausted, and that's just from watching them work recounting elections.
And my only point I was gonna try to make was I did run for city council once, and we sat up in the St. George's chambers, and all the results were coming in, and I was losing big until just five precincts came in. And that's to your point.
Yeah.
They were all from Bloomington Hills, my friends, my neighbors, Bloomington, and suddenly I went from a 400-vote deficit, Melanie's back there, to like a 2,000-vote gain. Well, if they'd done a recount on that, I would've lost, because there would've, chances are of any of those five precincts having been in that, I would not have won in that, let's say, 1,000-ballot recount, because it was random.
You mean the audit, right, Commissioner?
Audit.
The audit, right. They selected those precincts.
And if maybe even just one of those was there, I would've said, okay, Gil won. But the rest of them, I didn't win in those precincts until that very last result came in, so it's hard to look at a, it's not a survey. It has to not be considered like, oh, gee, lucky me, I got all those right random recounts, and that just isn't the way it always goes.
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, we've belated the point enough, I don't feel the need to discuss anymore, but I do feel it's, it's upsetting and disappointing when, when anyone feels like they're not being heard or that they're not, that we're somehow against them and that we're an adversarial approach here. We agree that election integrity and election fairness is, is paramount. We, we do everything that we possibly can. I understand that there are sometimes when you go, that'd be good information to have. We called for it to be had today, and luckily, we have a friendly ear because she's already asked for it. Susan has already said, that is good information to have, let's get that in place. The Lieutenant Governor's Office was here, and they're already working on it. I mean, this is, it's not an adversarial thing. We are trying to do, she, she, the clerk's office is doing whatever they can to continue to improve and tighten up elections, and, and we're sympathetic because we agree that this election integrity is an important thing. So sometimes it feels like there's animosity that seems like it's looking for a place to land, and maybe it's landing with the wrong people. We're, we're on your side on this. We're doing what we can for election integrity.
And I think that we all agree that it's in the hands of the legislature to send down new instruction. And if one, two, three, four years from now, Susan came to us and said, okay, there's some close races, or there are some people that don't trust our even newest quarter of a million-dollar machine, and if you, and if Susan came to us and said, look, the legislature in 23's session made it possible for us to do this, this, or this, and one of them being a complete and total by hand, whatever, with all the proper observers recount. Okay, if that was a choice, you could come to us and you could say, well, you know, it's gonna take about four weeks to do and about 200 volunteers. Commissioners, would you support me in that? Because the governor, lieutenant governor and legislature have all signed off saying, okay, let's do that. Well, we would probably have a decision to make and say, sure, we, we support you, it's really your decision, but we're not there yet. So we've done what we are allowed to do, and the future may change that based on what, how far up the ladder this goes. We have new legislators all across the state, and they may say, yeah, let's, let's give our local clerk auditors another tool, but we're not there.
Well, it's been a very memorable meeting, and with that...
Chairman?
Yes?
I don't mean to lengthen the meeting, but if I could make just two quick announcements for the public, the first is that we do have a library survey that has just gone out.
Oh, yes.
It will be live for the next two weeks. A lot of people that receive our newsletters have the link in there. Those that don't and want to be added to the newsletter, let us know, we'll add you. You can reach out to myself or one of my staff members. Also, it is on our website, so you can simply go on our website and take it. I think it would be really tremendous to have such, you know, a great response so that as we look at the future of libraries, it will really help us to make really wise decisions moving into the future, and especially maybe during this downturn, what things or people, people be looking for and things like that. The second thing that I just want to make an announcement is, hopefully Maury will pick this up in a story for tomorrow, is that we just put out a request for proposal for a new medical unit, medical housing and a booking release remodel that will be going on out at our jail at Purgatory, and that is going, has gone in a newspaper, but they've sort of, anyways, messed up a little bit, so I'm trying to get the word out more that we are looking for qualified contractors to, that are interested to put, to contact us. We'll give them the, the information, the documents, our needs assessment. We've completed a needs assessment on it, so we're pretty honed in on what we're looking for and what we're needing. And, and then they can follow, we have a pre-mandatory, like a pre-bid mandatory meeting that's gonna be held next Friday, but please reach out to me as the county administrator so that anyone interested can get that information. And the great thing is, is that when the government gave all counties ARPA funds, the Commissioners really sat and thought, how can this money be used to the wisest and can go the furthest? And one of the projects we did decide to take on, the Commissioners approved, was to expand the jail, which will help out tremendously. They were really bumping up against a, a need for additional services to be provided. If you saw during COVID what they had to deal with, with the medical team, it was so alarming to me when I went out, and that's what I really brought back to the Commissioners and said, we really have a chance to fix this and improve it, and also this will hopefully give us 10, 15-plus years before we have to look at an additional odd expansion, which would potentially be a bond. So anyways, just really excited. I think it's a great way to spend the funding. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't come out of any general fund that we have, and, and yet it's gonna provide such a great need for our sheriff's office and actually the community as a whole.
Fantastic. Thank you, Nicole, for all of your hard work on that. It does take a lot of work to get these projects even this far, so, thank you. Well, with that, we will stand adjourned.